Excuse me. It's my day October twentieth twenty twenty five to stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Call this meeting to order. Looking for approval of the agenda?
There's no additions, corrections, or deletions. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of minutes from October thirteenth twenty twenty five.
Well, good to me. I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
You weren't here. You need to abstain.
You're right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Item number one. Carroll County Sheriff, A, approved quarterly report.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Should stand.
Everybody got a copy of the quarterly report in front of them?
Yep.
Okay, so for this quarter ending in September, the sheriff's office, mainly the jail, took in uh one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, three hundred, one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety seven dollars and thirteen cents. So it's a pretty good quarter. Most of that, of course, is all room and board. But any questions about it?
You're on target to meet six hundred. You're above target.
Above target.
Above target.
Above target, but that probably slowed down in the winter time, I'll bet.
Again, you're guessing eighteen months out when you said six hundred thousand.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we can move on to item number B, discuss Calhoun County and Carroll County agreement to house Calhoun County prisoners.
Need a motion to pass the court.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the Carroll County Sheriff's quarterly report.
I'll second. We have a motion and second to approve the quarterly report. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. B, discuss Calhoun County and Carroll County agreement to house Calhoun County prisoners. Okay, this is something we've been talking about for probably the past six to eight months. It it's been a decent agreement so far, but we do have a lot of issues. With different offices up there, not getting us paperwork on time. Not getting prisoners released when they're supposed to. And it just because there's just come time to hopefully nix this agreement. It says I have to give ninety day notice, um which I am going to give today uh to Calhoun. Uh and we did check with Polk County and heard back from them. Long story short, they are willing to backfill. They they'll give us as many as we want.
So the the five average, the the.
That that's usually what Calhoun's been averaging.
You know, it's something I noticed Ken on the page, on the first page. It says um the transportation um for health services will be provided by Carroll County. That's not in the new ordinance, right? For Polk County prisoners.
Oh, no. For Polk County, the reason we like them so much is they're sentenced prisoners. They come here, they've already been in the system, they're detoxed. Usually well behaved. If there's any medical issue.
They come get and take.
They come pick them up instantly.
So are you looking for a motion to?
It's just been a good county's been great to work with.
So this agreement went into effect on May first twenty twenty one, and you're looking for?
And then it was updated um with just a resolution, I think, to from fifty dollars a day to sixty five dollars a day. We did that.
Ordinance of thirty six.
Yep, I got that.
Very good memory.
Okay, but so you're looking for a motion to start the clock on the ninety day um termination today, then?
I don't think I'd need one.
It's.
I was just letting you guys know my decision, but if you think we do, that's great.
Oh, but you're gonna notify them in writing then?
Yes.
So you're saying that you're gonna get enough backfill from Polk County to fill that dollars?
Yes.
Cause I think that's what we have to be pretty um cognizant of, so we make sure we I think we owe it back to our taxpayers that we get this paid off center.
Well, their jail supervisor this morning, he said, I can fill those spots. Uh winter months can get slower as they have in the past. Uh but you're one of the counties we enjoy working with and would as many as you would like. So so it's a good relationship.
Yeah, you you run the jail, you're in charge of it, I guess. You are correct, we don't need a motion.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern too, was just to make sure we get the revenue coming in, get revenue coming in to pay off the.
Yep, and now you're ahead of target after your first quarter of fiscal year twenty six, so.
Well, that's the plan we try, so. Nobody has a crystal ball.
I think it looks good to me. I I I was concerned about revenue, but if you're gonna backfill, I have no problem.
Yeah, is there any public comment?
I'd like to comment on it, but I'm on the agenda.
Okay, um so yeah, you run the jail. I mean, you're you're ahead of target and um I don't. The board has no say.
So.
I appreciate the communication, though, and bringing that to us and keeping us in the loop and backfilling with Sarah with Polk County if you do decide to dissolve the agreement.
And on one last note, Patty Mendenhall is retiring effective December twenty second.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Patty.
We will have a new jail supervisor. And I will talk to you guys about that down the road, too. That's been one of those jobs where we haven't had any redundancy at all, so I'm actually thinking about having an assistant jail supervisor, too, so if something happens. Um somebody's gone on extended sick leave or something. We do, things keep working good. We still get the bills out and cause there's a lot going on over there.
Patty, how many years of service have you had? Thank you.
Thank you. Not very many. I think she's got a couple of years left.
And Peyton came along just for the ride?
Yep.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Further questions? Thanks for the heads up.
All right.
Okay, item number two, Sack County Attorney, Calhoun County and Carroll County agreement to house Calhoun County prisoners.
My name is Ben Smith. I'm the county attorney in both Sack and Calhoun.
Okay. I place the names are all in front of us.
I see that here and um I'll have to excuse me, I don't know too many of you. I don't live, obviously, in Carroll County. I am uh born and raised in the area of Sack County my entire life. My kids go to Kemper. I dropped them off this morning, so we are intimately intertwined with Carroll County area, and that kind of brings me to my main point. What Sheriff Pinger didn't tell you is that I placed this on the agenda because it would have been nice if you had been straightforward with you guys and came up here and said, I'm canceling the contract because I threw a fit. Because the Calhoun County Attorney, Ben Smith, me, put out a press release saying that if Sack passed its jail bond, that Calhoun County inmates would be going to Sack in five years after the jails built. Okay?
Yep.
And.
And I saw along with that came a hundred and twenty two thousand in revenue, which.
Yes, but it also saves the Calhoun County taxpayers a a uncalculable amount in transport and then coverage for their county, because when you don't have the jail, you have to hire additional deputies to cover. Right, and to transport. So historically, before the new jail was built here in Carroll, Calhoun had been sending their inmates to Sack. That dissolved for reasons I I'm guessing Sheriff Pinger is well aware of. And Sack then was just through Sack.
So the new Sack jail is on the November third.
Yep, and you know, it's a highly contested, you know, issue. It it I I don't know where it fares. Like, you know, if you go online, there's a lot of people that are not in favor of it. And if it doesn't go through, then we are going to have to find some other place to send our inmates. Okay? But after the press release was out, and and I and I'm just shocked that Sheriff Pinger didn't mention this. He sent it, he sent a text to the Calhoun County Sheriff saying after he posts a screenshot of my press release at eight o'clock, says, we may cancel your jail agreement sooner than later and just take Polk if this is the case. No response from the sheriff in Calhoun. Pinger then responds again, Ben better hope it passes making statements like this. That's a threat. That's 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 retribution. That's retaliation. Half an hour later. Pinger, the Sheriff Riley, I won't commit tonight, but we will probably cancel the contract in upcoming board supervisor meeting on Monday. All because residents of Calhoun and Sack wanna build a jail and wanna save their constituents money. What is just absolutely borderline appalling to me is that any point in time Sheriff Pinger can fill this jail with Polk County inmates. He can subsidize Polk County with Carroll County resources, but not the local counties that shop in Carroll, that send their kids to school in Carroll, law enforcement that works closely with Carroll. He would rather, I I would have been okay with him coming up here and saying, you know, Ben, put out this press release, right? And I I would have, I would have accepted that, but what he told you was, we just like Polk County better. Well, you know what? There have been some issues with communications between the clerks, not the county, but the clerks in Calhoun who are brand new, who are still trying to find their way. Oftentimes, they don't get notices of release to the jail in a timely manner. They're new, they're working on it, they're understaffed. And that happens. But every time that has happened, Sheriff Pinger sends one of these messages to Pat saying, we're gonna cancel your contract if that happens again, is holding our smaller counties hostage with his new jail, not his jail, your jail. And that's not right. We pay the same amount as Polk County. But he would rather subsidize Polk County with Carroll County resources that help local counties like Sack and Calhoun. And I I find that unconscionable.
Ben, Mike Anderson. I have that same press release on my phone here. Um was Pingery or our county attorney ever uh notified before this went out between Sack or Calvin County?
I don't know. I I didn't notify him.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see how that's relevant, to be perfectly honest.
But what you did was you made a pledge of a hundred and twenty two thousand could be coming to help offset the revenue.
The Calhoun County Sheriff did.
Which would take out.
It wouldn't take out. If you can fill your jail at any time with Polk County inmates, as he just said, it's not taking out any money away from you guys.
But I I see it different in business, so.
How? How?
If you take away a hundred and twenty two thousand from us, we gotta find it somewhere else, so we are finding it somewhere else.
From where? From Polk County? When he just said at any point in time he can fill the jails with Polk County inmates?
I understand your.
Then then tell me what the issue is.
I just told you. I just said it.
Then I just told you that that's not, that's that's not, that's a.
Not right in your eye and not right in mine.
I I disagree. I you just said we're gonna take all your hundred and twenty two thousand dollars to or to Sack County. That takes away from us, at least coming up with a plan.
Wait, is re reset, re offset that money?
Are you gonna promise us a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars when your jail's built?
I I don't understand how you guys can't understand that Polk County.
I understand it.
Okay.
I don't get what you're saying. You're gonna take all that money with you. We just lost that money.
You didn't lose that money?
Sure we did.
How?
Because we had every, your Calhoun County was bringing all the res- or their inmates here to.
And now Joe County is gonna fill that gap.
Would you get, were were we gonna get a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars even what they're gonna send to Sack County also? So we've got to offset that somehow.
And you will with inmates from Polk County.
But you're just saying that's a bad thing to do, but we have to do it. Because we're not gonna have the Calhoun County.
And you can do it, and that's what he wants to do.
But I think if things would have been kosher, it wouldn't have happened.
Let's kosher me.
Well, whatever. I guess bottom line is, the sheriff is elected. He reports to the people. The jail was built to house out of county prisoners, and we have no say over the sheriff's decision.
Yep. So right now, because this is what we do, is we help each other out. And I respect what you guys are saying, but you're not, you're you're not right.
I think I am, but whatever.
I I wish you could tell me how replacing Calhoun inmates with Polk County inmates, making the same amount of money, is is somehow a detriment.
I think there might be a difference. I don't wanna speak for the sheriff and Ken in a minute. I'll let you come up if you choose. Um but I think the Polk County inmates are the role model inmates where they bring the best of the best. Where Calhoun County, we may not, we don't know what we're gonna end up with. I don't know if the sheriff would agree with that or not.
I would agree with that a hundred percent. Like I said earlier, I mean, the ones we're getting from Polk County are sentenced inmates. The ones Calhoun brings us down.
Do you wanna come up to the microphone, Ken, please?
Sure. I mean, we we've just, and Patty can speak to this better, but I mean, we just had a lot of issues with, and we've had most of our damage in the new jail from Calhoun County inmates. And we do, instead of making them drive down here, if somebody has to go to the doctor or whatever, we will take them. And, you know, not bill them, just as a courtesy. Um but that's a pain in the butt, too. I mean, I'm looking at just making things easier for our staff, and this this isn't brand new, Ben. This has been discussed for, like I said, six or eight months.
But it just so happened to come up after I posted that.
It that was, that was the turning point.
That's, so you're admitting that's retaliatory?
Not retaliatory, no. I saw it as a good opportunity.
Okay, well, right now, because of a conflict that Carroll County has, because we help each other out, that's what we do, right? Right?
County or contiguous counties all.
Contiguous counties. I am prosecuting a case for Carroll, a very complicated vehicular homicide case for free. Spent hundreds of hours on it. I'm doing it for free because that's what we do, is we help each other out. So.
I mean, we've got two elected officials here who disagree, and there's, I think, the board of supervisors. Our hands are tied. We can recommend, we can say, we can do, but I mean, I don't think there's, I don't know that, is there, am I missing something? Kurt, you got anything to say?
I'm just listening to what's going on.
Okay.
I've read through the contract. I think that you do get ninety days notice. I I'm just trying to figure out what's going on.
Okay, that's what, me too, but I'm just saying we're talking.
I will agree, Ben is correct. At this point in time, he is prosecuting a case right now for us. We have a couple of interests. And it's a complex case involving a depth of the vehicle. I'm not quite sure what the word bends out with that.
The relevance is, is that we help each other out.
Well, we're contiguous counties. I get your point on that. I mean, and I appreciate the support that you guys send to Carroll County. But I mean, to me, I don't know if this is a board of supervisors matter. It's more an elected officials.
I agree, but it was Sheriff Pinger is the one that told Sheriff Riley that he's gotta bring it up for you guys, so that's why I put myself on the agenda.
I was just making the board aware.
Did you put yourself on the agenda before or after I did?
I was on way before, cause I had my quarterly report.
So the cancellation of the contract is on the agenda before I put myself on the agenda?
Yes, I believe so. Courtney can answer that.
It was, it was to discuss it. I didn't know it was being canceled, but I I knew it was gonna be discussed.
That's what the minutes say. That's what the proposed agenda items.
No, people just call to get on the agenda. They call her or myself to say, can I get on the agenda?
And I, you mentioned earlier that I would know why Sack County canceled our contract with Calhoun. I have no idea.
Yep. I guess I I'm just disappointed with all the work that our agencies do with each other, with all the help that we give.
When the new jail, the new jail would be probably four years out.
Easily.
So are you saying this is a premature decision then?
I'm, yeah, and it's a decision that's not yours.
Right.
I thought it was because he took, because he told Sheriff Riley that it was. Yes, sir.
No, no, I just shouldn't be agreeing with you.
Right.
Yeah.
So you know, the sheriff wants to continue subsidizing Polk County over local counties, and I said I'd ask Sheriff Pinger, how many times have you guys taken people, Calhoun County people to the doctor?
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
More than, more than, more than five?
Oh, absolutely. Dentist, doctor, yeah.
You think this is right, what you're doing?
Do I?
Yeah.
I think it's right for my staff and right for the building.
And it has nothing to do with the press release?
No.
Has nothing to do with?
I mean, you could sit here, I'm not.
It has nothing to do with the following. Your comment that Ben better hope the jail passes.
I why didn't you guys come talk to me first? Why didn't, why didn't Pass say a word? You know, hey, here.
Actually, okay, real quick, I'm gonna shut this down. I'm not the chair, but I
It needs to go off.
I am the vice chair. I would ask you to, if you guys want to work some things out, do it outside of an open public meeting. And I hear where you're coming from, and I hear where you're coming from, but again, if we have no say, I would rather you guys work on something together if you can. I agree with you on contiguous counties, getting along. Pingery, it's your, it's your building and and ultimately.
What I'm saying that looks to me is if Calhoun and Sack have the opportunity to take care of their own, to save money, and Sheriff Pinger is upset by that period, so.
And you guys need to figure that out outside of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. No, you're good. I was, yeah. Um item number three. Text my gov decision, discussion, I'm sorry. Tentative to go live today, Dalton?
Yeah.
So if I did it right now?
I did.
Boom, I'm gonna do it.
Okay. So is this where they're gonna do the geo boundaries and? Yeah, get some mass texts today?
So um the geo boundary is actually all set by us, so we have access to the dashboard. That's something we, I guess we just set up. Um the actual list comes from the USPS database, so all what whatever they have for the number. Now, I know, like I've talked to other people um that have used these texting platforms and and use that list. Um it's not the best list in the world. Um so that's why you see me campaigning, uh putting out these posts uh for the text my gov, and throwing those up at gas stations at some of our surrounding towns. Um I handed out the stickers to y'all. We can throw those up in windows, whatever you wanna do. But um it'll be interesting to see what this first mass text gets us. Um right now, we have just over a hundred people that that have signed up in the last couple of weeks of uh putting these posts up. Um the Facebook posts, all that good stuff, but uh once we get an idea of like what we're getting for people, then we'll start putting those uh geo locations and things like that, so.
Yeah, so they have to text in to get.
We just did it.
Yeah, so.
I thought I was understanding, and it's telling us to text out first.
So that's kind of what I was talking about before. That's a U USPS database, um like the post office database. They have, you know, some cell phone numbers, but that list is not great. So counting on that isn't a hundred percent, um but if you wanna be proactive, you can also text that number that's on that sticker, so.
And then on at some point in the near future, probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll be um deciding who has the rights to post stuff on there.
Yeah, um I I've I've talked to a few depart- department heads about like use cases for this. Um you know, it sounds like Rhodes, uh a couple of departments will be able to use it, Courtney, for elections. The the possibilities are limitless, but uh also we have the the, you know, the text message limit, how many we can send, so I'm being mindful of that as well, but you know.
Instead of a countywide alert, it could yeah, could target a geographic area.
Exactly, so we we talked about those geo locations and, you know, if the courthouse is closed, obviously, we wanna send a mass text to everybody if it was closer weather or something like that, but you know, if it was like a voting issue in one area or something like that, then we could locate that just to Manning or or.
Flooding in one area or a bridge out in one area.
Exactly, um you know.
Or a car wreck in one area.
Yeah, I talked to the comm center a little bit about that. They do have a text message alert app for that, but yeah, that might be something we could integrate as well, so, yeah.
Okay, hopefully Gene can put something good in the newspaper today and uh try to explain to people if you dial this number. I mean, it's fairly simple.
Yeah, I just texted and it was something I needed to put in.
Yeah, if you text Carol to eight oh nine four six, um it'll get you on the list. Uh then after that, if you wanna text, there is a a phone number that comes with that. They'll text you back from, you can say that as a contact, um you know, get board agenda minutes, things like that. It pulls directly from our website, which is kinda nice, so, yeah.
Thank you. That was all I I wanted in to be on the agenda beans today was the official launch date. I'm hoping the, hoping the media picks up on it and less people know it's not a uh um one of those spam texts that come out that a lot of people hit block number and that they actually do go ahead and sign up.
And like I'll reiterate, um at noon today is when that text message that we talked about with that list will go out, so you you may or may not get a text. Um like I said, you can sign up ahead of time by texting that eight oh nine four six, text Carol to it and.
Well, I told some people yesterday I was with that if they got a text from that, that is a legitimate text to follow through on it. So that wasn't on spam or anything.
All right, thank you. I'll now sell our, the discussion and the the PR. Item number four. Approved recorder quarterly report. Good morning, Ashton.
Morning, Ashton.
Um quarterly report. I won't go down line by line. Everything's from the previous year. It's just real similar. Everything's up just slightly, which is good to see, but all kind of is right in line for the county and or the state side of fees. Everything's just, just up just slightly, but nothing out of the ordinary. Are there any specific questions? I don't have any.
Congratulations on your new addition.
Thanks. Jesse starts today, so I don't wanna leave her up there alone too long, but like right down.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You mean it when you say that congratulations, Mike? Yes. Conservation? No. No, yes.
Yes and no, it's our feelings.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the quarterly report or the recorder's office.
So moved.
So good.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ashton. Item number five, approved plat requested by Mary Hazen, owned by Dave and Dem, Dave and Deb Casper Bauer Family Trust on Eagle South of three hundredth.
I'll make a motion approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve the plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two um interfund transfers today. Both of them are roll call votes. Um the first one is a million four hundred and fifty seven thousand seventy two dollars from rural service basic to secondary road fund. Courtney, if you wanna explain, it's normal business.
Yes, their allocation of the property taxes.
Well, entertain for a motion to transfer?
So moved.
Seconds. We have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Miners?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries.
The second one is for a hundred and forty six thousand eight hundred and sixty eight dollars from General Basic, going into the same secondary road fund.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Miners?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven, manure management updates, D and D Clocky, section twenty two, Eden Township, no changes. Committee reports.
I'll go first. Last week I uh had correspondence with the uh agent for Tony Huffman on her opioid.
Yeah.
Um it went real well. Actually, we got, I got him negotiated down. It was ten thousand per activity down to seventy five hundred dollars, which I thought was pretty good. Uh now the next step is to meet with school officials to see if they're interested in doing this and then set up a timeframe. I thought we'd try and set something up after the basketball tournaments in March. Things slow down a little bit there. Then Tuesday, uh our committee on this opioid committee wanted me to contact some of the other outlying schools or or people who've had this before, so like I reached out to six schools. I only had two reps call me back. Uh one was from Indiana and one was from Pennsylvania, and they were, they highly recommended Tony, said he was very, very good, so.
I'm telling you, was he in the Olympics or was he a skateboarder?
Yeah, he was riding in the Olympics, and then he blew out his knee, so he got some kind of honorary award, but uh it's it's kind of a neat story that he's got. It's a nice, anybody's got a chance, took up Tony Huffman, he's got about a fifteen minute video about dock that he does. It's very, very interesting. It's how this guy came from being this, you know, clean cut guy to just smoking one joint, and he turned his life around, so. It is like the, where he went to prison, so it's it's kind of.
So you're hoping for like an all class assembly, like an auditorium full of people?
Whatever they wanna do, I think we'll try and book something up where either we do one per day for five, if all five schools agree to this, or we'll see if we can do uh two a day and one on a third day. And I don't have any problem. I don't know, think he would either. It's not a big deal where if parents wanna come, I think we need to do it during the school day.
Yeah.
So that uh we're get this, all the students involved, but if parents wanna come or whoever.
I will.
Yeah, I wanna, I think it's, I think it's a neat thing, and if we just, we we just reach out to one or two kids, it's well worth the money spent, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion. So anyway, so then I had a de-cap meeting on Wednesday. We approved the budget and we had transfer a little money around. And then Friday, I was with Scott and Jean down to Dedham for their urban renewal Tiff project that they're doing. That was very informative. I'll be out of town the rest of the week, so I have nothing on the agenda. I have.
I can go next. Um Friday was at the S Center up at Cherokee. Uh they had a average fourteen for the month, and that day, or the average fourteen point two six for the month, and they had fourteen there on Friday.
How many from Carol still?
We have two from Carol.
Okay.
Um and yeah, they're gonna be there for a while, I think. Um they had thirty two thousand dollars in just in transportation revenues from last month, so transportations have been quite up. Uh they had two new male hires. Uh they did have one gal that created a lot of problems up there and wound up. Created a lot of problems up there and wound up getting picking in the sheet rock and actually. Tore out a piece of corner bead, made a weapon out of it.
Wow.
Yeah. So it's, and then the other thing we did do is we did a vote to. Allow Peltor Alto County to be an affiliate member. Now, there's not a full member. They're not guaranteed a bid or nothing like that. But they just wanted to be an affiliate member, so we did approve that. Um, then Friday after that, I got back, I went out with them. With the other guys and looked at their TIF program and had some things. We cleared some error and some things I misunderstood. Um, then, um. This week I have, uh, this afternoon, I have another CCGP executive board meeting. And then tomorrow at noon, we have a CCGP board meeting. Later board meeting. Um, one thing I didn't, um. I hope we are gonna participate in Operation Green Light again. Do you know, Courtney?
I haven't gotten anything on it.
Yeah, it's usually I get a. November fourth through eleventh through NACO. Um.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And I was looking at the, uh, funds. Do we need to transfer, uh, some money from the reserves to sewer fund for Mount Carmel? Does that?
One issue. They have, they have two separate funds, um, eight thousand and eight thousand one, so it just pulls from eight thousand one, which is kinda like their savings account.
From that reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so it's good.
Okay, good. All right, um.
Newspaper and radio today.
Yeah, and I have newspaper and radio today.
And next week.
You're gonna do it too.
It's that and next week.
Yeah. Uh, I think that's, um. You know, I did, um. Kinda go through the budget thing that you sent out the other day, and I did notice there's. You know, our juvenile attention center is up quite a bit, and I think it's gonna be. I see the medical examiners up quite a bit over budget. Um. That Jim and Ammons.
I'm gonna address that at the end here. I'm gonna go on next.
Okay, then I'll I'll quit.
So last week, Monday, um, after our board meeting, we're about Renee's leaving, our HR lady. I checked with neighboring counties about HR. Um, Guthrie County, they have a full, way smaller than us, but have a full-time, um, HR. Um, manager, and they, I asked, would they be interested in sharing services through a twenty eight degree, E agreement? And they are, but, um, I also can get, Renee gave me some companies to contact. Um, they're both out of Des Moines, and Dave Mulbauer Crawford County uses somebody who we had previously interviewed, Gene. Um. But how would you like me to proceed on this before the end of the year? Are we interested in having Guthrie County come talk to us and share an asset? Um.
I guess my question to, it would be more towards you, Courtney. How often were we utilizing the HR side of it?
I didn't utilize it at all.
I think Renee gave me a summary of who did. I mean, there's several departments who used it frequently, but they were phone calls.
Yeah, their questions.
Yeah, but I mean, from, I don't wanna say. Counties are one size fits all, but they kind of are as far as the structure of a county, and I think it would be a a good way to go.
I would like to be part of the discussion. Depending on if you're looking at somebody to kinda just replace what Renee was doing, or if you were looking for somebody that's gonna do more.
Well, I think we would, whoever it is, we would need to bring in, but I can contact some of these other companies that Renee. Wanted, and we can bring them all in like we did before. One of them was Jack Reed. Um, one of them, we had, um, Renee came in.
I think Eric Burns out of business too now. He's got a young gal doing it.
Exactly.
I don't like to throw code around, but by code, I'm responsible for that. And I I'm fine with doing that, but I wanna be part of.
Absolutely.
Because I need to know what our responsibilities are going to be and.
So, um, would you like me to, or should we together, um, line up some people in the next couple of weeks to come and, um. Or we can ask questions?
I'm fine with that. I would prefer to wait till after the election.
Yes.
I'll have more time available.
Good. Right.
Can I ask who the two companies she's suggesting?
Um, I'll tell you here in a second, Gene.
Uh, we use it for negotiation for ambulances. Very nice to have Renee there on on, on site to help us with that, wasn't it, Mike?
Renee was good. And I don't know if the union, uh, has, um, actually voted to certify yet. Um, the one she recommended was, um. Mike Galloway.
Okay.
From Ailers, and there's an Anne Simon there, so Hawkins and Hubner. Are the two, um, that she's familiar with. So, and then if we did Guthrie County, also.
Mike Galloway's originally from Coon.
Okay. But, um, I think between Courtney and I, we can set up a date and try to get them all to come in on the same day.
And then when union negotiations be a part of that, or is that separate?
Again, the the union hasn't said rather to, they're gonna certify again this year or not, and Renee suggested that. The union doesn't have a rep, we may not need a rep either.
Okay.
We could just, uh, Mike and Mark could just do it.
Okay.
Um. So, Courtney, just to follow up then, we'll do that. We'll schedule those mid-November sometime.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, also on Monday, Carroll City Council meeting. Tuesday morning, executive board meeting at the, um, landfill. It's another clean audit. Thursday, I met with a county resident. Here in the board of supervisors room about next year's budget, specifically one office and some concerns. I did talk to Renee about some personnel issues. Um, the sheriff informed me about, um, Calhoun County inmates, and I kind of contacted all you guys. And I did talk to Zach about replacement insurance costs on equipment. He got his quotes on both ways. We've never done it before. Um, Friday, I did go to the sheriff's office to follow up on the Calhoun County inmates. Um, I talked to the county attorney, also offering him, because in the past, our previous county attorney. Said he would do the HR duties for a fee, and Kurt said right now he's qualified, but not interested. Um, but I didn't wanna leave him out of the loop from the previous county attorney. And I also asked him to be here today for, um, the Calhoun process. Um, Friday, Gene and Mark and I went down to city hall, met with Heather on the proposed TIF district. Also, we talked to Chris Whitaker and Rick Hunsenker. Um, it's basically. Um, eight blocks plus a couple of houses. They're looking to, but what they're trying to do is capture. The revenue off of the two new region twelve houses that are on Olympic Avenue. That's the the driver behind this. And I think they're looking to take that money to help make those houses more affordable. Is that what you guys got out of it? Um. Saturday, oh, I did go to the Carroll Children's Museum for the capital funding request, and it's like a kid's science center. I mean, it was crowded and. Um, Chase Warden was like my tour guide. He had all these kids there, but showing me around, but the word children's museum doesn't really kinda fit what it is, but. Yeah, to me, it's a a science center for kids that have to be, um, attended with by parents. Um, I'd recommend all of you go take a peek at it before budget season. This week, tomorrow morning, we have a meeting at the landfill for director recruitment. We have a safety meeting at ten. Um, you won't be there, I will be there. Um, tomorrow at noon, CCGP. Um, at six o'clock tomorrow night is the candidate forum at the rec center for the, um, city school candidates. Wednesday, RSVP recognition at the Carrollton at noon. And at five fifteen at city hall, they must be, um, I'm gonna attend this meeting, but what is a nuisance? Apparently, they get a lot of phone calls on people, um, complaining on what a nuisance is, so I think they're gonna have somebody there legally describe what a nuisance is. Thursday, I'll go to secondary roads, look at claims. Friday, um, Chamber Coffee at Elder Bridge, courthouse payables. Um, I did, um, access DC this year. I did cancel my airline ticket and hotel, with the government being, um. Shut down, I'm not sure that, but I think I wouldn't be surprised if the whole trip is canceled this week sometime. Um, and then the ambulance service, they are back to full staff as of the sixteenth. Um, I think we all need to expect a budget amendment. Stephanie and I get emails on this, but for the overtime and the part-time dollars. For part-time staff dollars that have been spent, um, we're well over halfway on both those things, and the fiscal year is only a third of the way over. So don't be surprised if that comes.
But it'll start to even out a little bit now that we're fully staffed. Overtime won't be as bad.
So that's all I have. If anybody has any question?
I can go. Uh, last week I had the newspaper radio. I went out to region twelve to sign checks. And then, um, yesterday's ambulance update and Scott touched base on that about the overtime. This week I have potentially Wesco, and then I'm gonna reach out to Barry Anderson on NACO, the National Associations of Counties, um. Potentially going out to DC in February. And then Tuesday night, I'm gonna try and make it to the candidate forum at six o'clock at the rec center. Bam.
Okay, um, a reminder. Next Monday is our last meeting until Wednesday, November fifth, so get any time sensitive materials. To Courtney to be on the agenda, is it's gonna be a, uh. Yeah, we won't meet the following Monday. It'll be a ten-day hiatus for us, so to speak. Um, any comments from those in attendance?